This is a meeting of the Joshua Meadows only commission. This meeting is closed to the public and subject to the laws of the state of Texas. I'm going to announce that we do have a forum present. Item C is to discuss, consider, and take action on appointing a chairperson and vice chairperson.
Our city charter requires this to be done once a year. This has not been done since the last appointments. So we just need to appoint a chair and a vice chair to be compliant with the city charter.
Since it usually takes place in November, will these people just only serve till then?
That's correct.
And then we'll do another election in the next?
Yes.
Do we get to volunteer or voluntold you? You want to be our chair?
Well.
You're doing a great job.
I would like to nominate Robert's chair. I don't have any desire to be the chair, but I'll do this if that's what everybody else wants. I thought you were doing pretty good. It's only in November, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that okay with you?
I'm fine. That's fine.
All right.
Yeah, sure.
So was that a motion by you?
Yes. Y'all got me quick, so. Go get a second. I'll second row. Or not me, not me. I'm sorry. Not me, Robert. I'll second. I want to do a vice chair. Let's, Brett wants to keep it. I'm fine with it, or somebody else wants it, they can have it.
I nominate Brian.
Pushed you under that bus, too.
We both got to be quicker.
Yeah.
That's fine. I'll be back.
Okay. Just need a vote. Tumble for both?
All's in favor. Okay, item D is to discuss, consider, and take action on the chairperson appointing a secretary for the five and zone commission.
This is also a requirement in the city charter. It can be the city secretary, which is very common here. They just had, just to be compliant with the charter.
She volunteered.
Okay.
We would appreciate it if we continued that way.
Absolutely.
Sure, everybody else would do. I'll say. All's in favor. Passing the motion. Item E is to discuss, consider, and take action on approval of the minutes in the meeting on February 19th, 2020. Somebody had a chance to make those. Any questions or corrections? I'll take, I'll retain the motion. Accept the minutes as. Motion, we accept the minutes. All's in favor. Item M is to discuss, consider, and take action on a final plat of lots 22-30, block one, lot one, lot two, lots one through nine, block three, and lots one through four, block four of Joshua Meadows addition, face 3B, being 30.508 acres of land out of the Kenny Williams survey, abstract number 636, and WH Miller survey, abstract number 603, the city of Joshua with Johnson County, Texas, and containing 333 residential lots of property zone. Plan development, order number 439-2007, as amended. Spat, please come on.
The preliminary plat of this property was approved by the city council on October 17th of 2019, and was for Joshua Meadows, baby, and 3C. Because of circumstances regarding the gas well location, the purpose of construction purposes, the applicant and his staff, and they can submit a final plat with different phase lines. The city staff will be concerned that it will not change the approved layout of the lots and streets. That's just like the general history of.
And I do believe we have Karen. Karen, can you hear us?
I finally can.
Okay, in case y'all hiding questions for her.
Hi, y'all.
No, but. So what's, what's, Michael, I have a question about the gas well being a holder.
I'm sorry, ask that, say that again.
Yes, the reason why they came with this with those, with 3B and 3C.
Right.
And now the gas well is the issue holding up the other phase?
No, what happened is is that they changed the, they just changed the phase lines around. It did not impact the layout of any of the lots, but when you approved the preliminary plat, the phase lines were different. And so what they're doing for two reasons. One had to do with the location of the gas. Well, I don't know all the ins and outs of that, but the other reason was because of infrastructure. They wanted to be able to tie onto some existing infrastructure. So we did, on a staff level, what's called administratively allowed them to move forward with changing the phase lines around because it wasn't going to impact what was approved in the preliminary plat. The only thing that got impacted was the phase lines, but the lot layout, the streets, everything like that is all the same.
Is this the final plat, only for 3B though, not for 3C?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, if I remember correctly, is there a park that's going to be dedicated with this?
It's a private park and, go ahead.
I was going to say, well, that was part of 3C, correct?
That is correct, but it's part of the development agreement that goes with this one. They have agreed to go ahead and pay the park dedication fees for both 3C and 3B, and they are going to be doing the private park as well.
They're not doing the private park until 3C, correct?
Correct.
But they're going ahead and paying for?
Yes.
Plan development? And I've got a copy showing that they have paid it. Karen, this turnaround that they're showing that's at the end of Valley View?
Where it shows the temporary turnaround?
Yes.
Uh huh.
So what time period are they proceeding between this one completing and the other one getting started? Apparently enough that they're having to put this turnaround in?
Yes, they have to put that temporary turnaround in primarily because, because we kind of require it, you know, to make sure that it's not just a stubout street, but they have to be able to put the turnaround there so that when they do develop 3C, it will then just become an extension.
Is it big enough for a fire truck to turn around in?
It is big enough. We did have the fire department look at it and our engineers looked at it.
Will there be anything, if they change the abandoned 3C, again, I mean, obviously, what would happen when that turn around, would you stay the way it would be here?
Well, I don't think they're going to abandon 3C. I think.
I don't either, I'm just curious, but.
I mean, that's, that's kind of a whole process, but here's, here's what I think that the plans are. I think the plans are that they are going to go ahead and continue with what is now the 3B. They just changed the, how much of it they were going to be developing at this time. And then, you know, right now, life is unknown for all of us, and once that gets developed out, then they'll come in and they'll finish out the rest of it, is what they have told us. The only thing that could, I guess, in the, in the big picture, that could possibly happen is if they, if they decide not to develop it, but I can't imagine that happening because they've come in, whenever he took this development over, he's been pretty, pretty head on on getting everything done. So I, so in answer to your question, so what happens to it? It stays a temporary turnaround until that site ever develops and when it develops. And it's in an easement. We, we had them put that in an easement that got recorded, so it's there until the next property develops.
So it'll probably be there until they actually start, they get pavement all the way up to that point from the other phase. Right?
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I apologize.
That turnaround will stay there until they get pavement from the other phase all the way up to the turnaround?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have, do we know when that's going to be, like, what the material's going to be for the temporary shooting?
It, it's going to be, it has to be approved by the city engineer and it has to be approved by the fire department, so it's probably going to be some type of an all weather and it could very well be that we're requiring it to be pavement, so.
Well, that was going to be my, I mean, I guess that's my question is because if it's going to be an all weather material, like crushed rock or whatever else, I mean, like you said, I mean, we don't know when 3C is going to happen. I mean, with the way the economy is right now, we don't know what's going to happen. I don't think that the people in Joshua Meadows are going to want to have a big crushed rock temporary turnaround there left in case something happens and they don't have the money to forego the 3C project.
I'll tell you what, I am gonna, I don't know if Steve is available. I didn't look at the construction plans. He looks at the construction plans and he approves those construction plans to make sure that it's going to be adequate for us.
I have no sound.
So then, now, just that turnaround is, is considered San林's property then, so that will avoid people parking down there because it's going to be used for obviously for emergencies. It's not a public roadway, right?
Well, it's going to be a turnaround where people can go and, and actually, it's going to be basically a cul-de-sac is what it's going to be.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
We have a gentleman, Mr. Smith, Gary Smith, who would like to say something.
Okay. Mr. Smith, go ahead and speak.
Mr. Smith?
Can you hear Mr. Smith?
I don't think he has his mic on anymore.
Ask me to. Okay, control is on.
Is there going to be anybody speaking from the developer?
He is not logged in.
Okay. If I ask any other questions? If nobody has any further questions, I'll consider. Are you making a motion? All's in favor. Item G, discuss, consider, and take actions on preliminary plats of lots one through 21, lots A, B, and C, block one, lots one through 26, block two, lots one through 43, lots A, B, and C, block three, lots one through 35, lot A, block four, lots one through 24, lot five, lots one through 24, lot six, and lots one through 24, block seven, for the Mockingbird Hill addition, being a 68.1939 acre tract of land situated in the WW Buyers survey, abstract number 29, city of Joshua, Johnson County, Texas, and better described as being located west of Santa Fe Drive between Cattle Road and Farm Market 917. Mr. Moll, one.
This property is currently vacant and is on plan development. Allow for 198 single family lots. The lot sizes will range in size from 7,200 square feet to 43,160 square feet per acre.
That's been ongoing for a while.
Oh, yeah.
And, and you guys, I'm just going to kind of jump in real quick, if you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, so, so this is the preliminary. This is just the preliminary plat for this. They still have to come in and do a final plat. There were a few items that needed to be worked out, and luckily, there's a provision in the local government code as well as our ordinance that allows that to go into the development agreement. So all of that is now in the development agreement on this that will become part of the final plat, but, but we have been working with the developer to make sure that everything is taken care of, but for right now, the preliminary plat in front of you is, is what it is that you guys are looking at. Did, did they explain to you guys that the ordinance changed so that y'all are now the final say so on plats?
Yes.
Okay, good. I want to make sure. I figured, I figured, I just wanted to double check on that.
Is this the entire, is this where all of the homes there? Because I know some of these are on different lots and it weren't, part of this was curb and gutter and then part of was varnish, is that correct?
So, so I, I believe, and I could be lying on this one, I think that this one, I'd have to go back and look at the plan development district on it, but I believe that you are, that you were right, that this is one that the plan development district, no, 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 that may be heritage two. Originally, it was going to all be part of heritage two and this, and they decided to separate the two out, and heritage two is more like a rural, because they're residential, because they're a lot larger lots. This one, I believe, is going to have the curb and gutter sidewalks.
Even down in the larger lot area?
Yes.
Well, the larger lot area, I think, is a separate, but it's not part of this? I don't.
Heritage, yeah, heritage two is not. The largest lot on this one, there is one lot that I believe is 1.4 acres. Erin, is that correct? In the staff report, it should say that?
One acre. Yeah, one acre.
Yeah, one acre, that's it. Hold on, I'm looking real quick here. Yes, they are going to be required to do curb and gutter and sidewalks during the final
So all this, what they're calling street C, G, where the large lots are facing each other, is not part of this subdivision?
I don't see which one that is. I'm sorry, I'm not actually looking at it.
It's coming off of 917, it's going to be what would be the, the most westerly entrance?
Off of 917?
Yes.
Hold on, let me look real quick at what the plat looks like real quick.
It looks like it's part of it. This is like the first lock. It's kind of like, so it's all one part, one subdivision. It's just that one stretch has larger lots. This is just like they sort of, I thought heritage two, right? All the larger lots there, the world, or works on curtain or varnish. So we can accept the correct about that because of, or I think that's where they're reaching. I don't know, J-Set's not going to serve seven.
Those, yeah, I'm, I am looking at those, and yes, those all still are going to have curb and gutter. It's, it's not going to be treated any separately than the rest of the development.
Wow. Okay. And this is all going to be on J-Set, Stuart?
So if, if I am, if I am telling you wrong, then I will, when we come back on the final plat, because this is the preliminary part, I will double check, but I am 99.9% sure because when, when we did the plan development district on that, it would have come up during the PD process, like it did in Joshua Meadows. That, that was actually a specific provision put in there and also in heritage two.
In the description, it's showing that there is three detention ponds, but it almost looks like there's four.
Let me blow this up a little bit and see if you can, tell me where you're looking.
And where they changed that, too, if they went curb and gutter on that last section.
Okay, if I'm looking on Caddo, where are you seeing a detention pond?
Caddo, where the, the street, the two, street, looking south.
Yes.
Running down, if they tee down into the one.
Yes, so.
Detention pond on each side of the road there.
Well, I see, I see one that says that it's a detention pond, which is on lot one, lot B, block one, and then when I look over on the other side, I see it to just say lot A, block three, open space and drainage lot, but it doesn't identify it as a detention pond.
So it's just going to be a, some open flat lot? Well, it looks like if you look on the east side of that.
It, yes.
Whole thing follows down and says that that's a open space and drainage lot that runs all the way behind all those, those lots on the, on the right hand side.
It's a drainage easement that apparently comes down to this particular area?
So who's going to maintain that? Where, where's that water going? Is it going to like a balloon?
I'm not the engineer. Alice, do you have Steve's phone number that we can see if he's available to call him in?
Yes.
On this? His, his cellphone number?
I think so. Let me check here. I think I have it with me. I do not. Would you, can you text it to me?
I'm going to see if I can, I'm going to see if I can find it, and then I will text it to you, I will, indeed. I'm going to. Hold on. Actually, what I'm going to do is I'm going to just send you a screenshot, that's easier at this point.
That's, I mean, there's not many things, that's going to be.
It's not concrete.
Yes, it's just.
It seems it won't be, because there is that water line that go back here.
It's coming to you now, Alice.
Oh, yeah, there will be concrete in there, I have the concrete problem. Yeah, so now, that's going to be the question, Steve's going to take care of all of this. Is this all H and L? Should be, I think.
So while, while she's trying to get a hold of Steve, do you guys have other questions? Because I think, you know, honestly, what I, Erin, what we probably need to start doing is having Steve available for these meetings because there's, especially when there's engineering related questions.
Right.
So, but in the mean, and I, I don't want us, I want us to keep going with this one because these people have been trying so hard to get this on an agenda, but we also want to make sure y'all are taken care of on your questions. So assuming that that would be, where was the other detention lot that you saw?
Down at the end of 917, on the east side and the west side.
917, oh, okay, so we've got lot C, block one. And on the other side, right there. So, so three detention ponds and one drainage area. One of your questions was who maintains that? Since they, since they have them set up this way in a lot in a block, and they're also referring to them as open space, that is the homeowner association's responsibility to maintain that, not the city.
Even if there's drainage issues?
If there's drainage issues, then they contact the city as far as the drainage issues are concerned, but these are, these are detention ponds, they're not regional, they're private, so, so that is something that is, the developer deals with and then the HOA has to deal with, because this is runoff coming from their property. It doesn't get dedicated to the city, the city doesn't maintain it.
Hi, this is Ms. Joshua. Okay, I have Mr. James on the phone. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. We have some questions about the drainage.
On Mockingbird. So see if he has a chance he can pull that plat up of, of Mockingbird, specific to the detention areas.
I'm sorry, you're broken up a little bit. You have, I heard that you, you have a question about the drainage on Mockingbird.
The plat.
Hills, Mockingbird Hills.
Okay.
Do you have the, the plat in front of you?
I don't have it. Yeah, kidding. How, do you just explain what the, what the question is?
Okay, coming off of street A, there's a drainage area all along the, the back of that property coming from Caddo Road going south.
Okay.
And empties out into open space, according to the sign we're looking at. Once it gets into that open space, where does it drain to?
That's a, that's one detention.
Steve, Steve, can you, this is Karen, can you hear me at all? I bet he can't.
It's, it's Karen talking. Can you, can you hear me now? I'll just have to repeat what she's saying.
Is he in front of his computer where I can send him a copy of the plat?
Are you in front of your computer where Karen can send you a copy of the plat?
Well, I'm just logging on right now. I, I'm just going to say, well, I'm a little.
Oh, okay. So we'll, we'll let him open the plat up, because I think as soon as he sees those three drainage areas and the drainage basin, that he'll be able to answer the question a lot easier.
I think what happens is it comes down that, that even, that drainage even behind the lots, between Harpish and Mockingbird, because one detention pit, and then I believe goes across the street to the other one, and then down the roadside, which I think that's
Is he still looking at it?
Yes, he is. He said he's almost there.
Okay, I, I actually heard that, yay. So can y'all see me or can you just hear me?
Just hear you.
Oh, that's, that's good. I didn't have to put makeup, I, actually, I do have makeup on. Oh, that's, that's good. I didn't have to put makeup. I, actually I do have makeup on.
Okay, I have it on.
Okay. He's gonna open a drainage study then with this.
Okay, good. See, he's the right person to ask. He's, he's the engineer in the know.
Karen, also, if you look at this on the second page of the, that says street C, it does look like it shows bargeages.
And, and we need to ask him that question as well because he looked at that. I just know that in my comments, you know, they have to put sidewalks in, but I don't have what the, the other information is on that. I thought that, that when they do sidewalks, they're putting in curb and gutter as well. But Steve reviewed those, so he is the right person for us to ask on that.
Thank you, right. I think there are some ones that.
I got a fifty foot.
And then it's another protection there. Whether it's, if it only gets wider, it's seventy six feet wide, uh, there were no sidewalks around.
Okay, good. There's your answer then.
On street C? The larger lots. Where the larger lots are?
Yes.
There's, there's no sidewalks there?
That's right.
Because the street's wider?
That's right, yes.
Is it curb and gutter?
No, it's not curb and gutter. Uh, there were roadside issues there.
On both sides?
Yes.
Shows the road is thirty foot paved wide.
If you go through the second page of the plat.
Shows it's.
Down in the lower left corner, there's a section for street C. And it shows the, cross section with ditches on both sides.
You guys see that?
It's right here.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah. Is there?
And it's a typical residential street next to that, the sidewalks.
What's on the, on the larger lots on street C, just on the west side, what's gonna be in the fifty foot drainage easement?
Was that a question for me?
Yeah, I'm just curious. It just, what, what's gonna be easement there in that somebody property? Is that where all the water could be flowing down?
On, on where?
On lot C, I'm sorry, street C on the larger lots, if you look on the back of the property on the west side there. It's, uh, it looks like it proposes fifty foot drainage easements. And then rolls out of the detention pond. I'm just curious if that, if there's gonna be striking water flowing all the way from the top of their subdivision all the way down.
Did you, did you hear what he said?
Um, I, I think I heard that there was a drainage that's on the, along the west property line.
Yes, sir.
And the natural drains, the, uh, the detention basin, it's on the.
Just north of there?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So the detention pond is basement drainage down, down the main section.
Okay. Obviously, is that, that's an easement that'll be filed, obviously for the homeowners to be aware of. Because like on the backside of Running Brook, how much water it collects, that, that'll lead to a easement there. But who would assume that easement to make sure that part of the property flows out of the HOA?
So the HOA is responsible for this easement also?
Yeah.
Back up here where street A ties into street B, and you have all that water coming behind A and comes down across to this corner, is, is it going to flow and then go across the road to a ditch? Or I mean, or is it just, sure, it's not just flowing over the curb and going onto the road, right?
Um, no, I'm sure. Talking to you, I, I, I hope that the, uh, the metal they wrote for drainage.
So what it looks like to me, I tore mine apart and put it together like it should be. Looks like it's gonna run down that, that easement we were talking about earlier, that we didn't know who was gonna maintain. Collects down into this little drainage lot, and then I believe it's gonna go under the road to the detention pond. And then Brett, it looks like the easement you were just asking about on the west side, that's what's gonna drain this, this detention pond and down through the back wall.
That's what I was asking, if there's a balloon there.
Right.
How the water can get there. That's, that's on the plat where it goes.
There should be a, come a storm drain plant. Didn't say that at all.
Okay. Karen is trying to find a storm drain plant still.
Oh, okay. I guess Mr. Smith left the meeting. He may have had questions on the first plat. I'm not real sure.
He's still a part of the meeting. Um, his Bluetooth was hooked up. That's why he couldn't hear us.
Oh, okay.
He's watching.
Okay. So Mr. Chair, what we're gonna start doing, and I, I, besides just asking Erin to make sure, I just sent a text to Josh also. On these plats, I think it would just really be beneficial if we have Steve as part of this. Because the majority of the questions that you guys have are engineering related. And he's, he's gonna have those answers. And so hopefully next go around with the plat, we'll go ahead and have him on standby. So you'll have any of your questions answered.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
If I send you a, maybe I could send you a detail that's got the drainage plan to show. Uh, how would he, how would the load go through these?
So you're wanting to send them to, say, Alice?
I can print it.
I can do that.
And then she can print it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's the overall storm drain plan. Of course, we probably changed some of the details that's said. But just like I was saying before, that the, the ditch that is between Carrot Ridge and Mockingbird, the one that starts now. Does, uh, one detention basin on the east side of the street. And then it goes through a culvert over it to the one on the west side.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, that flows down that drainage channel into the back of the lot, so it falls to the west property line.
Okay.
So, let me go ahead and.
Did anybody have any other questions for him? Other than the drainage?
Can you, can you rephrase? Street C is thirty feet. And I've noticed that from nine seventeen, you know, if street C is gonna be feeding all of those houses just north already to Caddo. And he said that street C was larger, but from according to the diagram here, the residential street is thirty one pavement width, and that was only thirty. So I guess.
Is that for me?
Yes, um, on the street dimensions that we have, street C is showing that it is thirty feet pavement width. Is that correct?
Street C, uh, yes.
And that's for the one with the larger lots?
Yes.
So, so this other one that says residential street is showing thirty one feet?
That's, yes, that's thirty one. Uh, it's actually thirty feet from the face of curb on each side.
Okay.
Thirty, thirty one back to back.
Right, right.
Yeah, so they would have the thirty foot one that would be stretched for two twelve foot lengths. And then the extra would be used for a shoulder for walking, I guess is what they explain. And then they, they're showing kind of a flat shoulder off of the paint road off of.
How, what's the dimension on that shoulder?
I mean, I don't have a big shot. I think we talked about five feet, but that's.
So then it would make it a forty foot wide road. So.
Right, if they, yeah, well, I think it's tied down a bit, I guess, but. That's what it reminds you from what we discussed. You know, up there, sidewalks, there'd be ample so much on the pavement.
But those shoulders would be made up, they would all be the same material, correct?
Well, shoulder, right now, they've got it. Normally, if you look at the street C, the most section.
Yeah.
You've got the pavement width, and then they have something that's kind of boxed in that looks like.
It doesn't really, doesn't explain what it is.
That's right.
Is there something that could just be clarified with the final plat? Karen?
Yes, whenever they submit their final plat application, that's when they have to submit all of their construction plans, all of their civil plans that are gonna give Steve the details that he needs to go through on all of the standards and specifications for the streets.
But just, I mean, approving this plat tonight will get them moving forward if they get the final, so we can see where the water's gonna go under the road.
That's when you're gonna be getting your details, yes.
We can have more details to make sure that we approve the final.
I guess the only thing that I'm wanting to clarify right now is that on these larger lots here, it says.
Steve, did you send it?
I guess it's a.
You did?
Send and receive button. The send and receive button.
Alice is asking you to, for your send and receive button. What was it? These are gonna have bargeages in the front. Correct, and then most of the, the easement behind it too for drainage.
Okay, well, fine.
Okay, she left room to go check, so let's have, wait till she gets back. It's gonna be tough to maintain. But it's the HOA, it's not the city's. Well, but I mean, but that's part of the lot. It goes through the lot.
That's what we're talking about. So they'll have a river in the back like we're getting, what's it, like we have now.
Well, that's what we're saying. So I mean, so these people, I mean, that's gonna, I mean, if they have fences there, that's gonna go. The fences are gonna be there. It's gonna be going, I mean, they're gonna have to be raw iron or whatever, but can you imagine the amount of stuff that's gonna get caught in it? The stakes and the trash and the, we have that now.
Where, if, if I may ask, where are you talking about where you're kind of concerned about people putting fences and?
Okay, so, um, what is this? Is this street C? Street C?
Right.
So all the large lots right here on the left hand side, um, you've got a barge ditch in the front.
Right.
And then proposed fifty foot drainage easement, like Brett pointed out earlier. It's gonna go across the back of all these properties also. So there's a, an actual barge ditch in the front of the house and then a fifty foot drainage easement behind it.
Let me see if I can.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I, I see, I see what your question is. So you're one, you're, so the question is, there's gonna be drainage that's gonna be coming in front and in back.
Correct. And if that is true, which I mean, it looks to be, but, I mean, then how is that gonna work when people start dividing their properties with fences there? Because that's across the back of the actual lot. That's not behind the lot. That's through the back section of the lot. Karen, is there a reason why they didn't put storm drain hide behind there so to the season?
Uh, that's gonna be a Steve question when, when, I don't know. Steve, are you back on the phone?
I'm here, Steve.
Yeah, I'm sure they don't want to pay for it.
You said they didn't, they didn't, they don't want to pay for it?
They're gonna have to put the pipe in the house because they, they have to, it's expensive. It's more expensive than digging a ditch.
I'm gonna ask Steve a question and I'm gonna see if y'all can relay it to him. Ask, ask him if the direct preliminary drainage study that they submitted met all of the city's requirements as far as our minimum, our drainage criteria is concerned.
Did you, did you hear that?
I, I heard. What, can you repeat what she said?
Steve? Karen, can you repeat it one more time?
Yeah, yes, yes. So ask him if the preliminary drainage study that they submitted to the city, if it met our drainage criteria when he reviewed it.
Did the preliminary drainage study that you submitted to the city meet the city's criteria?
Oh, um, it must have been just when we reviewed it. And I think the, that was at the, uh, setting point for just those one review. And I think that the, it was the online detention basin. And, uh, you know, whatever technical reasons he had with that, uh, it's just a difficult to sign, I think, properly. It's still an asset upstream. But otherwise, uh, it meets the drainage criteria, yeah.
He said, who, Jason?
Yeah.
Justin Oswald.
Justin?
Yeah.
Is he with the city of Joshua?
No, but Justin is, he works with me.
Okay.
He's the one that's, that's my friend from the meetings when we talk about this whole drainage issue. That's the area that's.
So, so here is what I would recommend. If Justin looked at this and Justin's not going, he should not have approved a preliminary drainage study unless it did meet all of the criteria. Then this is something that whenever they submit the final, that Steve can get, make sure he's involved in this. Make sure that Justin's looking at it too. Make sure that it, we can't, we can't make them do something that's above and beyond what our minimum requirements are.
Right.
That's, that's, that's the bottom line. If they meet our minimum requirements, then it's something that you guys have to approve this.
No, I don't think they may have approved that. I just, it's this easement, it's explicitly easement, it will be filed. So the homeowners will be aware that they have a fifty foot drainage easement in the back of the property that they might have property.
Right.
Ledge away, not by the city. When they have drainage issues, when their fences start building up and collecting debris.
Um, you know, I, I.
I mean, if it meets the requirements, I understand that it's just long term when there's, if, if there are issues that the homeowner is aware that this easement is part of the HOA and not a city easement.
Well, these easements, if they're in the back, I don't think the fifty. Well, these easements, if they're in the back, I don't think the 50-foot easement that's behind their house is part of the HOA, that's part of their lot.
Okay.
So it, because that's not a separate lot like the other ones are. Um, that is just like a typical easement that you would have on your lot. So when they, when they buy this and a survey's done on it, and title insurance is done on it, that 50-foot drainage easement should show up on everything so that they know that's theirs, and they know that's their responsibility to take care of it.
Okay.
So is that just, so is the easement then just in case? Down the road, is they need more drainage, or is that, I mean, or is that easement because they're, it's going to be used right off the bat for drainage?
Yes.
Yeah, the easement's there because there's going to be drainage.
Man.
Okay. All right, my, my other concern is making sure that the, that the future owner is aware of that, that that is, or there's an easement there for drainage. Just so it's not a surprise.
Right.
In a rainfall, that their barge ditch is in now the front and back of their houses are flooding, and that this is not a city issue, that this is done by the, by the, you know, by the flood study. If it's been approved and meets our requirements, I understand, so just as, that's disclosed, I guess, in mind for concerns, or that in the back is why we don't approve this.
Right.
But it meets the drainage studies, so.
Anybody, anybody have any other questions for Steve? Thanks, Steve. Karen, do you have any other question for Steve?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Good, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. Did you, uh, did you get the email, sir?
Yes, yes, we did, thank you, sir.
Okay, all right. Talk to you later.
Bye-bye.
We can bring up the sidewalks at the next meeting. On our final plat, we'll bring up sidewalks.
What's the question? Oh, oh, to discuss the sidewalks?
Later, yeah, 'cause I, I don't understand why we're just gonna give them a wider, well, sometimes a wider.
There's, there's a provision in the subdivision ordinance that says that if the lot size is, uh, over 3/4 of an acre, that they do not have to put sidewalks in. So, so if that's something that you guys want us to relook at, we can relook at it, but, but as it is right now, they don't have to do curb and gutter or sidewalks if it's 3/4 of an acre or larger.
No, and I'd be okay with the extended shoulder that he discussed, it's just some of the details for the final plat is what it's gonna be made out of. Um, and I guess the exact length, as he just said, roughly 10 feet, but there's nothing on the plat to show what is gonna be. So just those details, when we get to the final, that'll be, I think, that we wanna make a look at.
Here you go. Here's your motion?
I make a motion to accept the preliminary plat, just with some of those, we'll see on the final plat before you.
Motion from-
Motion, Jason.
Flat, and for the big set. One second. And a second from Mr. Fraser. The vote, follows the paper, passes unanimously. Future agenda items. Request, request by commissioners to be on the next agenda. Anytime.
There may be a rezoning request on the agenda. We've been working, um, out some issues on a particular one on Main Street where there has been, the property, up and down Main Street is owned commercial, and there have been a number of, uh, there's a number of residential houses there in the commercial district that want to continue being utilized as residential. So I think through the years, Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately City Council have approved various rezonings to take it back to residential. So that's what the case is, but big picture, we need to look at the big picture of that whole area because, um, the comp plan shows that all is commercial, the property got all zoned commercial, but we probably need to relook at that and see if maybe there's some areas we need to put back into residential. So y'all aren't getting, you know, a scattering of requests for that.
Okay.
So we're working on those details right now, and so hopefully that case will come to you at the next meeting.
All right, thanks, Karen. Thank you, Karen. Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Nobody have anything else? Karen?